President of the Institute to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We can take a moment of silence? Okay, uh, local supervisor Stalin, trustee Gray?
Present.
Trustee Merson?
Present.
Trustee Melody?
Present.
Trustee Severs?
Present.
Assessor Morello?
Present.
Commissioner Robinson?
Present.
And Collector Lermol?
Present.
Okay. Any public comments?
No signs.
All right, approval of minutes from July 14th, 2025. Do you have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
And trustee Gray?
I'll sign it.
And trustee Melody? Any discussion? Supervisor Stalin?
Aye.
Trustee Gray?
Aye.
Trustee Merson?
Aye.
Trustee Melody?
Aye.
Trustee Severs?
Aye.
Assessor Morello?
Assessor.
Oh, that's right, that's right. Okay, that's right. Okay, we have to start. And some reports from township officials, if we start with the trustees, we'll start with trustee Melody.
Um, I guess, yeah, the only thing, I already got to talk about the, um, the, uh, open space civic center committee appointments later, but just why I think a lot of people showed up to the meeting was the last week and I thought it was really good. A good turnout, a lot of, a lot of good people, a lot of good ideas, a lot of good thoughts. I think once we talk about the committee again, get informed of what we're working with them and, and I think it'll, it'll do well.
Trustee Gray?
Um, I've been working the last couple of weeks on a, uh, write-up for the veterans committee. Um, it's not ready yet, hopefully I'll have it ready in the next couple of weeks for preliminary run by everybody. And, um, still looking for anybody who wants to be on the veterans committee too. So if you do, uh, email us at the township and, uh, hopefully have that next meeting that you put my report.
Trustee Severs?
Uh, from my report, I just wanted to recognize a phenomenal young man in our community by the name of Austin Beelski. He has run a lemonade stand, this is his eighth year. This year he raised just shy of, well, will be over fifteen thousand dollars. Since he started, he has collected over thirty-five thousand dollars. When I went there on the first day of the stand, I was fortunate enough to meet Dylan Preston, who Austin was raising money for, as well as another young man who had, um, is in remission from leukemia by the name of Rico Yaraes. So keep up those good efforts.
Okay, trustee Merson?
Uh, nothing.
Okay, and clerk? All right.
Um, Bingo will be tomorrow, senior Bingo. Um, last time we had about, I think, seventy or seventy-five, so we'll see what we have tomorrow. Um, and I have already arranged everything for the Christmas party, it's all set, so. So again, any donations or anyone who want to donate anytime or be on the committee, just let us know.
And how about Commissioner Robinson?
Uh, we just finished up the, uh, MFT for the year and, um, we're just going through all the bills and justifying everything and that's for now.
Okay. And, um, oh, let's go to the assessor's side.
The tax. Hi, everybody, uh, assessor's office, you know, not much goes on the assessor's office, right? Um, we're at the point where we're working on border reviews. Uh, border review has, portal has opened with the county, so any resident that didn't agree with our soft appeal, uh, they have an option to go to border review. Border review looks at the evidence that we present and then they make a decision on their own. Now, that is not the last and only, they also can go down to PTAC, um, where we are just, um, the township just acts as a witness to the evidence that's presented by county and that's the last resort, once the final decision's in, that's what the tax assessment will be at the year. Um, I think last year we did probably roughly about a hundred or so, um, we ended up stiffing most of them. Um, so we work with the residents, try to come to some good agreement if we can, um, and that's how that works. So if anybody has questions, they can call my office. Um, we also got a lot of permits going on this year, it's been a good year, uh, so we've been out and about doing a lot of that stuff too, so keep them busy.
Okay, you can call up your colleague.
Okay, and from my report, um, at the last meeting, I reported that we were, we were hiring for free positions and one of those was a maintenance foreman and I'm really looking forward to that. And he was in a car accident, took a couple of days before he was going to start and could not start. So we are in the process of hiring a maintenance foreman, so, um, if we interview, if you know anyone who have him, submit an application. Um, also, a lot has been going on, it's always busy crazy. Uh, we've been focusing on what needs to be maintained, you know, different issues on our properties, Morris Park, but we've had a lot of vandalism and I really would like to speak to that. I mean, it's been over a period of months and the village experiences it as well. Um, we had a lot of the FD on the conception stand in Morris Park and that has been painted. There were some benches that were smashed at the healing garden and we haven't done anything about those yet. And, um, we've, uh, had the windows broken in the barn at the, uh, transient park and those have been repaired. And so, um, we're just looking at, uh, we need playground repairs and just before we even talk about civic center, we have to address our maintenance needs and that's what we've been doing this past month. So other than that, I, I'll have comments, I'm sure, on every other item that we uncovered tonight. So moving on to action items for approval of bills for payment. So if I could have a motion to, uh, approve payment of the bills for November July, I'll make that motion.
Severs?
I'll second.
Uh, supervisor Stalin?
Aye.
Uh, trustee Gray?
Aye.
Trustee Merson?
Aye.
Trustee Melody?
Aye.
Trustee Severs?
Aye.
Okay, next on the agenda is, uh, a resolution to amend the 2025 regular meeting schedule to change the regular meeting location to 15057 South Cedar Road from 14350 West 151st Street and to authorize required notice and posting. As you know, it's a meeting here now instead of at the township administrative building. And at the beginning of the year, we publish our meeting calendar and this resolution is to just follow suit with the rest of the meetings for the rest of the year will be here at the town hall. So by, is there a motion to approve resolution HT 2025-0811, Res 2?
I'll make that motion. I'll sign it.
Trustee Melody?
I have a question also.
Okay.
On the, um, on the last page of the, why are the two, October 6th and the November 17th, they have asterisks?
Yes.
Before them? Is that, you know something?
And where?
On the very last page, it shows a schedule of the three main meetings for the year. There's an asterisk on October 6th and November 17th.
Oh, because those aren't the, um, those aren't on Mondays, but it's not the second Monday of the month. We have to change, we have to change. So in October, what was the issue?
Move the.
Because of the holiday, oh, a holiday, because of Columbus Day, so we moved it up a week. That was already published that way.
Okay.
And then the 17th, we're looking at.
That's the year, right?
Yeah, that was.
Because the conference, because of the seventh of the town.
That's part of this.
Well, it's not in the resolute, the date changes aren't in the resolution. The resolution is just on the meeting location, when it comes to date changes, we'll just publish, uh, the plans of meeting and such.
Okay. That was the only question.
Okay, anybody else? Uh, supervisor Stalin?
Aye.
Trustee Gray?
Aye.
Trustee Merson?
Aye.
Trustee Melody?
Aye.
Trustee Severs?
Aye.
Okay, moving on, uh, next item is a resolution to approve and authorize execution of fourth amendment to the lease held on power at 14350 West 151st Street with Spectra Site Communications. And, um, this is what we were, why we had a special town hall meeting, because we needed the authority in order to enter into a less, a lease agreement. And as mentioned at the town hall, provosts weren't here. Um, we've had this, the tower by the admin building since nineteen ninety-seven and this is to now extend the lease another twenty-five years. And, um, we're going to get thirty thousand upfront and then, uh, we will be getting thirty-nine hundred every month. And then that goes up every five years.
So is there a motion first? To approve the resolution?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion?
I'd like, uh, clarification on one thing from, uh, maybe from Jason. Um, under the budget implications, it says in 2031, the monthly rent will not be increased ten percent. But during, in, in the body of the agreement, I believe it says that the next escalator is in 2026.
I thought, well, there was, I thought there was an ambiguity about that as to receive clarification that is after the first five year period in connection with the first removal of the escalator.
I think that's what it's, that is what it says and certainly in our package, but the very first page of the lease.
It's the fourth amendment you're referring to.
The, uh, first page of it, the bullet points under, uh, option one. It says, unless there's an option, I'm not seeing that we're taking.
Town.
It says that the next escalator is eight, seven, twenty, twenty-six. I mean, either way, I'm gonna pay with this because the thirty thousand dollar signing bonus is great money and either way, we'll be back at the same rent in very short, short order, but I would just like clarification on that. Because if we get that escalator next year versus 2031, I think that would be better.
I think it's just in article drafting, because I think the intent is that the rent of Sephora commences on one of those makes sense.
Well, I think the lease might really expire.
I thought the lease expired and it gave us a little time for the meeting.
So I think that they would do the same thing. You know what, you were going to say something about the term of renewal. Okay, so what we have in the, we get in the motion is, is there a motion to approve resolution HT 2025-0811, Res 1, approving the proposed fourth amendment to standard lease agreement with Spectra Site Communications, adding increased insurance requirements because we were adding insurance requirements and allowing supervisor and attorney to make clarifying changes.
Right.
So we need to clarify change, we could, we could do that.
Yeah, I don't have, I don't, I think, I think we're lacking clarity, to be honest. During negotiations, we'll need clarity too.
Yeah, so, yeah, we will. Um, we'll make sure, the resolution that's being proposed allows, um, Sue and I to make, um, clarifying arrangements. Right. We should presumably both approve those, so we'll make sure that we do that.
And then we.
And then report back to the board.
Okay. That was the only thing I had on.
Okay, any other discussion? Trustee Melody, trustee Severs, trustee Merson?
Uh, supervisor Stalin? Aye.
Trustee Gray?
Aye.
Trustee Merson?
Aye.
Trustee Melody?
Aye.
Trustee Severs?
Aye.
And to D, um, the approval of the open space civic center committee members. Um, as trustee Melody mentioned, uh, last week, um, I had a, a meeting inviting the public to, um, hear about the civic center and volunteer to serve on the, uh, open space, um, civic center committee. And, um, we had a nice turnout and so we, these individuals have stepped forward. Well, myself, Josh Barrett, Margaret Sabo, John Robinson, Paul McGarry, Dan Melody and Sarah Coleramal. And there's still room for others to join, but this, these are both who have given us their commitment at this time. So is there a motion to approve the appointment of the, of those individuals?
I'll make that motion. Trustee Severs?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, supervisor Stalin?
Aye.
Trustee Gray?
Aye.
Trustee Merson?
Aye.
Trustee Melody?
Aye.
Trustee Severs?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, and the next item is approval of transfer of budget appropriations. And, um, this is, uh, we were given a little bit surprised from the budget and for the insurance for the open space property. It was budgeted on the line for insurance, two thousand four hundred and four dollars and the insurance has gone up probably because we get a building on the property now and it's now eight thousand eight hundred and ninety-four dollars. So it went up five thousand three hundred and ninety-four dollars. So what we'd like to do is move, um, the, those funds from the contingency line over to the liability line in the open space fund. So if I could get up, is there a motion to approve a line item transfer of the amount of five thousand three hundred and ninety-four dollars from nine ninety contingency from open space, open space fund to the seven thirty-four liability from the open space fund, uh, open space line? Let me get that straight. Anyway, for the open space liability line and the open space line.
Make that motion.
Melody?
I'll second it.
Trustee Merson? Okay. Any discussion?
So do you know this one forward, the thousands going to be arming?
Well, it could go up, you know, insurance has gone up on everything, uh, even just the fact that we have a building now, but, um, so.
When we make the adjustments to phase two, will it increase it even more? Do we own it? Will it increase it with, uh, certainty of occupancy?
Well, it'll increase it for this budget here. I don't think.
But for twenty twenty-six?
The next year. If so, I mean, I, I can't, I did not ask, I honestly did not ask the insurance company that. This bill came from, this bill was actually submitted in May, so, um, we build again.
Just curious if they would, if they would draw even more since it's going to be up. I guess they want to hit it right now, uh, like, and how much more?
Well.
If that costs a little more.
It would most likely, because we would have uses going on, other things, the great majesty, the value of the building itself.
Anybody else? Okay, um. Okay, Professor Stalin?
Aye.
Trustee Gray?
Aye.
Trustee Merson?
Aye.
Trustee Melody?
Aye.
Trustee Severs?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to old business. Um, first thing is the 143rd Street update. And I said I would update everybody every month on that. And, um, so, uh, I had recorded that the county had chosen to move forward with the project and to continue moving forward with the project. And now they are open to entertaining, um, somewhat of a compromise of five lanes to Parker and leaving the two lanes west of Parker to Lamont Road, leaving those alone. And, um, and they didn't say anything about traffic light for sure at Cream, but if that's something that we would like to see, I know, put in there. And I'd like to just hear your thoughts on widening 143rd Street. Because I've been speaking and we can follow the lead of the village and supporting the village with whatever they want. How do you feel about compromise to widen it to Parker and not having widen between Parker and Lamont Road? Anybody to not having it widened?
I think that's, I think that's, uh, mostly impact on the, the houses that are closest to 143rd Street, east of Parker. You know, Donwood, um, Chickasaw on the north side, um, there's, uh, the old, or old, old street, whatever that's called.
Old street.
Then it goes, old town goes around. Um, there's a lot of houses there that would be more impacted probably than further west. So it's like mostly residential impact is, is there. And let's face it, this is the nose under the tent. You get five lanes to Parker, you gotta choke all that traffic down to one lane, going all the way out. You're gonna have, it's gonna be like, you know, the super speedway coming into one lane. They're probably trying to force some accidents there, to be honest with you. So, you know, it softens everybody up in the community for a later date, uh, expansion of the rest of the road. I think just either keep it the way it is or do the, I, I think the compromise that I liked was the modified, I think it was like, uh, three lanes. Yeah, uh, you know, because that was, in that front, the entire route, that could continue to handle a little more traffic. It would be easier to still one lane of traffic in each direction, but allowing people that are turning either right or left with deceleration or left-hand turn, keep that someplace to go, you know, instead of blocking all the traffic. So I, I'm not really crazy about this idea of some, some, putting five lanes only to one specific area, especially when it's already going up to three fifty-five. That's not fun.
You can say something?
Okay, well, yeah.
Just somebody to trust these, this, this.
As somebody who drives 143rd Street every day, I could tell you that there's not, it's, the traffic isn't lowering. There's still a lot of traffic. I wish I had recorded it, I wanted to show you, uh, like, earlier, uh, last week, where it was backed up from Parker to Santa Cruz, heading east. There was no accident, there was no anything, it's just a lot of traffic on 143rd. Now, one way or the other, I, we know, you know, Cream Road is terrible, there's been a lot of terrible accidents. They have to do something with that intersection. But, um, these roads are not necessarily always built for the current traffic, they're built for the future traffic. So, um, I think that that's part of what they're, what the plan is. We don't widen roads because of what's going on this minute, we widen roads because of what's going to happen. So I think that is something that needs to be considered. And I know your concern is truck traffic, but like I said, I drive, I live on 143rd, I drive up and down 143rd Street all the, all the time. I never see trucks east of, well, most of the truck traffic we get goes to our shopping area, trucks coming off the tollway to our shopping area. So, um, I just think that needs to be considered, you know, um.
I mean, I worry about the school there, my kids want school there and, you know, you make that left into, I think, why you turn on a left into the school there because it's a little choppy anyway. Uh, I'd like to see a compromise, but again, I, I don't know, I, it doesn't seem like our residents want it. Us is bored here, how many miles does it affect the township?
Well, the township doesn't have much on it, it's just, well, the Homer Glen residents are township residents too.
Right.
So, but as far as the township jurisdiction, that's very much.
Right, so, I mean, is it more of a federal tissue? I mean, I, that's where, you know, I tend to get my questions.
So we have a county board member here, I just kind of want to figure this, if you don't, I, um, I, when I talk to residents, just a moment, when, when I talk to residents, I hear most of them do not want it. That's pretty, I hear that, oh, pretty, that's the, the message that I hear. I, I, I would still like to, just fight for the, the modified three lanes instead, you know, the center lane instead of the, um, the full five lane widening, but, and if you want to say something, or number one.
A little bit of the stuff. Uh, from my standpoint, whatever the road to Homer Glen was, wherever you guys want, that's what I'm going to be fighting for. I've been fighting it two and a half years already. So it's not, this has been going on and on and on. And it's just about, out of a twelve-month period, the county boards arguing about this, at least seven. So this is a longstanding problem. So the county executive got all nervous at that, that's meeting when Sue came and, uh, the mayor came and they both spoke and they made people a little bit nervous, right? And.
He's our resident here.
Okay, it scared me, all right. All right, well, anyway, the road is actually gonna go from Route 59 in Plainfield all the way to connect to 143rd and 355. They already built the bridge over the Slings River and it stopped and it has 143rd Street written on the bridge. Just so you know, it's not a project that we're thinking about. The project ends at Cicero. So this project is going to be, in my mind, guess what, I've been, I know I don't like it, because it's gonna bring warehouses and trucks, because it's gonna go from Route 59 to Cicero and it's, that's gonna be a truck route. They're saying it's a minor arterial road. To me, it's an expressway.
Well, we are, where I live, we, it's already five lanes and we already have warehouses and trucks. So I'm, I live close to 355, so we already have that. You know, as far as, as far as what the village maintains, which is most of that is in the village all the way down, that, that they can control by zoning, they don't want warehouses, they can control that by zoning.
You know what's gonna happen, there are people on the western end, and I'm not the favorite of this thing still, just so you're aware, you know, but I'm not gonna go, I'm supposed to represent all the people, but yesterday, but, uh, when you, when you start talking about the western end, they got all those ranches with, uh, farm animals, well, they're not gonna be able to keep those ranches where all the noise from the track. So what's gonna happen, they're gonna sell, who's gonna wanna buy that other than warehouses? Because they're not big enough for subdivision. So what's gonna happen, that's why I have one of the things that, I'm not saying it's gonna happen, but to me, it's like the logical thing, because there's a, a expressway right there, put up a warehouse and they get on and off and so they're gonna be going. And it's gonna happen to us anyway, a little bit, but they're gonna put a light at Cream Road, at least that's what I was told, because that's an unsafe place. So we're gonna get a light at Cream Road and then, in my mind, because I used to drive a truck, I get off at 355 and if I wanna go east to 294, because that's the idea for this thing, you can get off at, uh, east of 294 or east of, uh, 57. It's home to Cicero, so 127 to Cicero, you can get on 294 and if you go up to Flaston, you can get on 57. So that connects everything. And I can understand why IDOT wants it, the state wants it and why all the mayors and manager groups want it, but they're, we, we have to worry about us, you know, and that's why I say I don't like it. But when they threw this other thing out, uh, at any time, as you guys know, a board can overthrow what. a board can overthrow what prior board did, correct? You guys know that, right? Or eight, we voted for something, you don't like it, and voted out. And that's just how it works. So, if they decided to go west of Parker, in a future board, they'd have to start all over again. They'd have to go up for M. Domain or Quick Take, and they'd have to start the contract bidding again. So it would take a while, and hopefully the people on the county board at that time, whenever it is, would be fighting it. But we would also have an advantage, because I got a resolution passed that at any given time in a multi-year plan, you can change the plan. And they don't wanna talk about that very much, but there's a plan out there that I felt like crazy to make it go through. So if you don't like the plan that they would present, you guys can go to the county and say you don't want it, and then hopefully you get the board members to vote your way. But that's the only thing we got that might help to protect us going forward. Otherwise, we're relying on each time a new board comes in. The board that's there now will not vote for 143rd Street getting increased. But with this compromise, I don't know, because the county's gonna save $13 million by stopping, because they won't have to give the federal government their money back that they already got. And they won't have to, they bought, they already contracted stuff, so they'll have to break the contracts, and they'll have to pay something there. So they're estimating that this new thing will save them $13 million bucks. So now the county board people that we have, that are, that crossed over and voted about this, we may lose or may not, I have no idea. So I have to put up a good argument, one way or the other. And it's based on what you people here say, and it's what the village says. So, you know, that's, that's why I'm here, because if you have a question, I wanna make sure you understood. I told Sue that too. I, my exact what I said. You know, so this is an opportunity, in a way, to stop it, and, you know, we're gonna have to stop east. Or fight it, and then you have a chance of killing the whole compromise thing, and it's still gonna happen. Or they're just gonna say, "Too bad." They're taking the compromise, and they're not gonna listen. So that's what's gonna happen. I don't know what's gonna happen, really, because I don't know how you guys are gonna vote to Sue, and I don't know what the mayor's gonna do. You know, I talked to her about it.
When do you, you have this meeting in September? The transportation committee meeting? When is that, September night?
That was Public Works and Transportation.
So, when do you want some feedback from us? I think we just, we were just talking about it, but I think I'd like to hear from our residents. And, I mean, because right now, I'm gonna do, I'm gonna support the village on this. And I think we would do that. You know, so, but I, you know, I'd like to have some conversations.
Yeah, I, I listened, you know, not everybody really had a strong opinion on it, except for Pete and Chris, you two.
I think, I think some of them.
No, but, you know, I, when I go into this thing, you know, when you start arguing, you gotta argue with a strong case. So I have to be able to say, "I went to the township, and the township says yes," or the township says no. And the same with the village. You know, and for me to do my job, it was great, I have to, I have to do what you guys want.
Well, I think, like, we have consensus that we would like the third lane option. I think that was presented, even though John's not on, but he's, he's on Highway, so he would share on 143rd Street, I think, is, counts for a lot.
You know, so...
Well, like I said, I think roads are built, you don't wanna retro, you know, retroactively build roads, because now there's issues, right? You would like to build the road for the, for future use. And that's, that's kind of the, the, how you build roads, right? So, I, like I said, I have the five-lane superhighway in front of my house, and I have the noise, and I have everything else, and...
I think we're, I understand. We're in a unique situation, though, because that five-lane road was planned for the future. And that future never materialized out here. Will County was a runaway, you know, the population growth, Homer Glen would have had 50,000 residents by now, and we're only at 25,000. That growth didn't materialize, so we're in a unique position, because there were those forecasts made, and if they had built according to those forecasts, one day, we're making them. Like I'm saying, we build for the future. They didn't do that, the future did not materialize. So it's kind of like, we do have a unique perspective, we can kind of see backward and forward at the same time, and say, "All right, that didn't really happen. Is there really anything on the horizon right now, looking forward, that we can say, "Well, we're really gonna explode over the next 25 years"? Well, there's really, I mean, certainly 25 years ago, you could look back and say, "There was explosive growth, and yet it didn't materialize here." So, I, I, I think that, you know, given that, you know, that we have that, maybe other communities have this too, I don't know, I don't read all the local papers, but, you know, we can certainly see that that did not happen here. So we don't really need that, that, that much of an expansion, so...
And we don't want that, that's that Homer Glen road, that they're building the road for. And we don't want that kind of road.
It's regional.
Yeah, we want, we want the growth, we want the growth, we want 159th Street to be utilized. 159th Street wasn't widened when they made those plans for 143rd Street. And now 159th Street is five lanes.
So when you say, "Oh, are we building on something?"
No, I'm just trying to get consensus.
Are you just making opinions?
We need to talk to the mayor.
This is gonna start in approximately two weeks, all this discussion.
But he has to know.
I gotta know. You know, he wants me to go in there and say, "Forget it, you guys don't want a compromise at all, and we want to just stop the period." And I gotta fight on it. And I gotta come up with the logical arguments, just like an attorney would have to, but I gotta come up myself, and I gotta use that to try to win. The other side can say, "Well, this is a good option, because it's like playing a dice game." And, you know, lose, roll the dice, because how many more people are gonna wanna save that $13 million box? I don't know. And I'm an office worker, just saying, you know, give it in. See, that's why I don't wanna make that decision without telling everybody, get in for it. Because, my God, this is like one of the biggest things that's happened since I moved in here. And I don't think it's right for one guy, or actually two, Jim Richman, because he told me whatever you guys want, he's following my lead. So Jim Richman will do the same thing. But I don't know how the other county board members are gonna feel. I don't know what they're gonna do. But we gotta have something to fight, and the only way to fight the proper way is to be able to say, the entire township board is on board to say no, or say, "You don't like this at all, but you're voting yeah, because it's a good compromise"? I don't know. You guys understand why, where I'm at. So for me to win, and you to win, you guys have to make a decision. It don't have to be this second, but we gotta make it before September, because the first meeting's like right beginning of September. And I gotta firmly have my arguments made, so if you call me up...
It's the same day as our meeting.
I don't know if it's on Tuesday, the first meeting.
Yeah, ours is gonna be on the Tuesday because of Labor Day, isn't it? Or, it's still Monday. So our meeting will be the day of the beginning.
It'll be your first Tuesday, whatever day that is, in September. But I gotta, but I need at least a week to come up with some time to, come up with some arguments using the statutes, and arguments using what they've said in their own words. I don't know if you guys think it, you found what I'm talking about? Yeah. So that's important, because if you don't do that, then I gotta disimprovise, and I don't know how far I can go. You know, it's like, "Well, you know, this compromise is a good compromise, but we really don't want it." You know, something like that, or I go, "We don't want the period, we want the three lanes, and that's it, and we want the red light at Cream, and no other choice." This, to me, that was what the best solution was. The three lanes, we return, and a red light at Cream. But that didn't happen, obviously. So now we're at a different quagmire, and we gotta not, it worked as a team, more or less, and come up with an answer. And you got two county board members that'll fight for it, and I don't, I don't know what else to tell you. You know, I just hope you guys can, I mean, I'm not saying to have a special meeting and talk about it, but you might, you might have talked to Sue one-on-one, that way you're not breaking the open meetings yet, and then she can find a higher deal, and she can call. You know, because this is a big deal. And I don't, I can't fight without you guys.
Yeah, we'll definitely do that. Do you, I, sorry for a second, has the village come out of a crucial position on the compromise?
No, I, I, I come out and talk to the mayor today, just to see. So I, I just would like to encourage everybody to talk to, you know, your friends, you know, people that are in the village, because this really does affect, in my opinion, affects the character of our community greatly. And it also, and I said this before, I think it can affect the economic development of 159th Street, because now you can drive all this traffic down 143rd, because it'll make it easier, faster traffic, rather than going down 159th Street.
You guys are gonna be looking at walls instead of trees.
Yeah.
Have anybody seen the architectural plans, walls and things?
It's not gonna be good, it, you know, it's gonna affect a lot of homes. So I just think we need to sound stronger, whatever we say. So, just if you can report that to me, that would be great, and I'll see. Ms. Raj.
Steve, what about those meetings, President?
I am.
I am.
Yeah, and I'm not even sure if we're beyond the first Tuesday, because that's Public Works and Transportation, I'm on that committee. It could be on Capitol Republicans, which is at 10 o'clock, and I'm on that committee. And then it could be on Executive, the following Thursday. So, because this covers everyone, because it's already been everyone. So it's up to the speaker, Joe Bandine, to decide where to put it.
Okay, move on to the Civic Center update. Or anyone else? Okay. Civic Center update. As you heard tonight, we created a committee to focus on open space in the Civic Center. And currently, right now, we're going through a single audit that was triggered for, because of the federal funds involved. And we are appealing to the grant manager to still get funding for the subject system, because they were trying to close out the grant. So we're working on that. I have taken photos, and I'd like to do a video, and we'll be uploading that to our website so people can see the status. And the committee is going to meet September 2nd. If anybody else is interested in opening space at the Civic Center Committee meeting. On to the parade is, the village is having a parade here at Kirk on August 30th at 10:00, Saturday. And Trustee Sebers has been doing an awful job, we're trying to coordinate shirts and candy and... Fellers? And a banner, so...
Banner music.
You have anybody you wanna?
It'll be entertaining.
So hopefully everybody blocks that date, and public comes out for the, and supports the village's parade. Okay, moving along is the logo discussion. We'll do the logo discussion first, since it's not... Okay, so, it's, you may know, in the previous administration, they changed the township logo. It's in the birds in the packet, but on the agenda, it's, it's 10A, is the logo discussion. So, included in the packet was a copy of the branding guidelines that were created by Mr. Gondak. And there's been an expression about, like, maybe offering the logo a little bit to use, you know, give it an alternate use. Do you wanna speak to this at all?
Sure. So it's on page one, and I don't know if anybody has the packet. You know, all we did is, all, the only change that was made was to take the roots from the tree and make it into a couple of hills. It'd be easier to produce for cut vinyl, and for apparel, things like that. So, and again, I was not proposing anything other than maybe a little easier. I was not proposing to change the logos on everything. You can see on our packets and everything, we have, we will continue to use the logo for the roots. This was just an alternate to make it easier for the roots in some situations.
So I, that's what I'm looking for, is, we're not gonna motion tonight, all right, just a consensus, if we add an additional logo to our carpet. Because I, I think if we're looking at doing anything, like on the apparel, for the shirts for the parade, we're gonna be having objections to that. And we could formally make a change at the next meeting.
On page four, maybe?
Okay. All right, and then moving on, the next item, which was to be announced in general assistance procedures for the, and this is just for the sake of the minutes. And as a township supervisor, I am Mr. the General Assistance. And it is suggested, I don't know if it's required, that we record in the minutes that Homer Township has adopted the written standards provided in the Township Supervisor's of Illinois General Assistance Handbook for determining general assistance to be provided for applicants. And there's no motion needed, it's just a statement for the minutes, so that it's clear and understanding to anybody who's applying it, those are the guidelines that I'm using when administering general assistance. Okay, and then, the other thing I just wanted to mention, it's that under new business was that the porters have requested to use the fire pit at the transient apartment. Anybody, I mean, we would follow our general policy for using the facilities. If anybody has any thoughts. Currently, I was...
It's the junior porters, correct?
Yes, junior porters, yeah, thank you. Currently, we are, the village is going to lend us some fencing. We're gonna put fencing around the silos, and fencing around the corn crib for safety reasons. And we are also replacing the mulch in the playground. When that comes out, we're going to put snow fencing around the playground area until we know the status of the playground equipment and have to complete the necessary mulch. So it might not be the best-looking place for a while until some of those things are remedied. If anyone has any thoughts?
They wanna use the fire pits specifically? I mean, that thing's got the trainer, so...
Well, we're gonna take the benches out, so they would have to be their own chairs, but that's just a designated area for having a fire.
But the fireplace pit, it's...
They're like talking about a bonfire, or something? Because that's not a very big, I mean, that's like three feet across. I mean, that's not a very big space to have a bonfire.
Well, they've done it there before.
So they don't make a huge fire, it's a small fire, it's kind of get together for all the parents, get together with the kids, you know, just to celebrate their homecoming. They know they can't do a huge bonfire, they're gonna move back. They go with a smaller one. And then they just get together, and that's just an open space for them to use. Their other option is always, you know, where the football fields are, but that's your direct competition of the stadium. So they always like, felt like if we did the trintino, it would be better, so...
Sue, did you mention a date?
Uh, September 2nd, so we...
We have some time to... I mean, especially to take the cover off it and see what's living in it, for starters.
I have seen under the cover.
Okay.
And, and our maintenance people have been, are cleaning it up.
Okay.
Okay. All right, um, does anybody else have anything for new business, or something that they wanna bring up for... Next month?
You know, I think some several phone calls for, about the senior expo, because we're usually in it, so we're getting phone calls. I just wanna let the board know, you know, I think OSCO reached out to us, our office, and there were a few other ones that reached out to our office, because, you know, and I just told my, at this moment, with a new board, they haven't decided what we're doing, so we just wanna postpone for this year, so just to let everybody know what's going on.
You know, the senior expo was a nice one, and I know it was well-intended. It was just too much for us to take on, just coming in and figuring everything out, and then to coordinate and event with that size. And it would be nice if we could have it at the Civic Center, but I don't think that's gonna happen. So, you know, it probably will just not happen too much.
State Senator John Kirby and Representative Nicole LaHopper having a senior fair in the Lamont Township building, I believe, being, I can't remember the date offhand.
Well, they just had it.
Did they?
Uh, Lamont Township did the first. No, no, Lamont, not that one, it was... Uh, well, my township just, no, no, not for it, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the one in Lamont is sponsored by, uh, Senator Kirman and Representative LaHaw. So that's coming up, so I think it's gonna be very exciting to, uh, the senior expo, also.
And I thought what we might do for them is, might have some other little activities. We have found out that we have a credit with Drury Lane back from 2020, when they used to.
Before it was.
Yeah, so they contacted us, we wanna use it. So we, we're gonna still offer some activities and things for the seniors, we just can't pull up an expo right now. So, um, so that, does that help?
Yeah, thank you.
All right, um, so, we can, we can go into closed session four, so, um, I guess, I'm just looking for, I'm looking for a jury, is there anything else?
So. Oh, wait. Yeah, yeah, we're in some, first seat, we're closed.
Well, we should've done it during public.
I, I was trying, there's my hand.
What is it for?
I, it was about a few things, about, uh, 143rd Street and.
Oh, no, I, that's, that's, well, you'll have a check after me, that's fine. Is that now, or is it a whole load or? Okay, so. Looking for a jury? Oh, my God.
I'll sign.
Okay, Seabirds and Alie. Favor?